It is May 5th, 2025. This is our regular Board of Education meeting. First up, Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, trustee, oh, we went up here gone. I love trustee Harp. Please.
To allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apologize for putting on this. Next up is roll call, please.
Becca Shambless.
Here.
Melissa Dodge.
Here.
Carlos Harp.
Here.
Cindy Holder.
Here.
Mark Kimball.
He is late because our meetings start early now.
Kristara McAlpine Taylor.
Here.
Gloria Thompson.
Here.
Next up, public fundamentals. Input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request form and give it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Public Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. Did we get any requests? Alrighty, and we are going to move on to the presentation of awards. And Superintendent Perry.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Um, I don't know if you guys know, but this week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers, as well as last week was Principal Appreciation Day. So I just want to do things a little differently today. Instead of honoring the kids first, I want all the students to see their staff or their principal being honored. So I'm going to start with Principal Stacy Colley. We have a Staff Member of the Year that we want to honor tonight.
May we please have Ms. Devon Toko? We are so incredibly honored to bestow Devon Toko with the esteemed title of Madison District Public Schools Teacher of the Year. EP Lit 12th Grade English and Film and Lit Studies instructor, Ms. Toko has consistently demonstrated an unwavering commitment to fostering a love of literature, critical thinking, and academic excellence in all of her students over the years. Ms. Toko inspires, motivates, and empowers her students each day, challenging and supporting them with engaging lessons that push them to explore complex themes, think critically about texts, and make connections to modern-day issues. She takes the time to get to know her students personally, making each individual feel valued and supported. Our students are encouraged to take intellectual risks, share their thoughts, and embrace the challenges of a very rigorous coursework without fear of failure. Our Eagles see Ms. Toko as a role model, not only for their academic expertise, but also for their character, treating every individual with kindness.
Beyond the classroom, Ms. Toko is an active leader in the school community. She is our English Language Arts Department Chair and our sponsor to the senior class Dollars for Scholars program and Student Council. For all these reasons, Ms. Toko's inspiring classroom presence, her role as a motivational mentor, and her tireless dedication to student growth, we are honored to recognize her as the Madison District Public Schools Teacher of the Year. She has made an indelible impact on the lives of our students, and her passion for teaching has set a standard for excellence within our school district. Thank you, Ms. Toko.
Have a surprise for our building administrators. We honored them last week, but this week we want to honor them publicly. So if I can have all the building principals come to the podium, we have a little token of appreciation for you guys. They are so used to getting, putting medals on kids, and today you guys get your medal. And we just want to say, on this Principal Appreciation Day, we proudly recognize and celebrate the outstanding leadership of our school administrators: Stacy Colley, Lisa DeGiulio, Jennifer Halchowsky, Dr. Felicia Hemmway, she's not able to be here tonight, um, Asena Jones Richmond, as well as Tang Tran.
As principals and assistant principals, you dedicate your time, energy, and hearts to ensuring our students are educated, our families are supported, and our staff is equipped to thrive. Your commitment to excellence, compassion, and service is the foundation of our school community.
Today, Madison District Public Schools gives you your well-deserved flowers. Thank you for everything you do, and your impact is immeasurable, and your dedication is deeply appreciated. Happy Principal Appreciation Day.
Thank you very much. Um, today, we are going to honor from ECC our GSRP students, and we have them from Ms. Erickson's class.
Camila. Camila is such a bright light in our classroom. Her smile is contagious everywhere she goes. Camila enters the school each morning so happy and excited to come inside. Prior to starting school, she mostly spoke Spanish at home and courageously entered our classroom where everyone spoke English. Her language skills blossomed exponentially quickly, which resulted in her becoming fluent in speaking English. She plays well with all children and is quick to lend a helping hand if someone needs it. Camila is so creative and artistic. Whether it be cooking a pizza in the house area, drawing a picture of her family, and asking me to send it to her mom, or building a creation with any type of blocks, she's always creating. She takes part willingly in all activities I plan and constantly is telling me which activities she enjoyed by saying, "I loved that." Camila has grown so much this year, and I am so, so proud of her. I look forward to watching her excel in kindergarten and in the years to come at Madison. I am honored to award Camila Student of the Month.
Chandler. Chandler is such an eager learner for just being four years old. His mind works well beyond his years. Chandler came to our classroom this year after previously being in the ECSE classroom. He handled the transition to a larger class size and a longer school day with such courage. Chandler is the most observant student I've ever had. He notices anything and everything about everyone. Chandler is quick to notice anything different in the classroom and asks questions about it. He is also one of the most gifted students. Chandler loves all hands-on experiences and especially thrives when I pose activities as a challenge. This year, I have taught Chandler to keep trying when things are hard and to have the courage to keep going. He is so proud of himself when he conquers something big or small that he didn't think he could do at first. He is such a kind student, which is something I really admire about him. Chandler seems to really enjoy school, and I am so pleased with the progress he has made this year. I am going to miss having him as a student in my classroom, but I am confident he is well-prepared for kindergarten. I am proud to honor him as Student of the Month.
Next, we have Madison Elementary School.
Good evening. The elementary is recognizing fifth graders this month, so could we have Amir Elie come on up? Amir is in Mr. Odo's class. Amir is the kind of student every teacher hopes for: driven, curious, thoughtful, and full of heart. His incredible work ethic and genuine love for learning shine through in everything he does. Amir is constantly pushing himself to grow, not just academically, but as a person: always reflecting, always striving to be better. He brings a thoughtful presence to every class discussion and balances his determination with a fantastic sense of humor and radiant joy that lifts those around him. Amir is an absolute delight to have in class, and we couldn't be prouder to celebrate him as Student of the Month. Nice job, Amir. Next, we have Jenna Almoham. Ooh, she's not here tonight, but I'll recognize her anyways. We are thrilled to announce that Jenna has been chosen as Madison Elementary School's Student of the Month. Jenna consistently embodies the characteristics of a role model student, demonstrating kindness, responsibility, and a strong work ethic. She is always willing to lend a helping hand to her classmates and approaches challenges with a positive attitude. Jenna's dedication to her studies and her commitment to making our school community a better place truly set her apart. So congratulations, Jenna, and keep shining brightly.
Thank you. Wilkinson Middle School.
Anthony once again. Um, at Wilkinson Middle School, we have two eighth graders to honor tonight for their courageous academics and just their overall great students. Um, I'd like to invite Mr. Anthony Perpurr, and I'd like to invite first, Rose Maddie.
So Rose is a current, um, eighth grader, and she is just a doll of the building. That's what we call her, just consistently working extremely hard each and every day. Um, I've, over the last two years, myself, I've witnessed Rose just constantly aim to be better all the time, no matter what, even when she's just at an A- or at a B. Uh, she's always doing what she can. Um, this, this last report card, she finally made straight A's. She made all A's. And she's a leader, uh, all around. She plays on our sports teams, and she just exhibits all of the courageous behavior that we want as a Wilkinson Wildcats. Mr. Perpurr.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. I don't know what else there is to say on top of what Ms. Jones said, but I can think of no one else as a leader as I can, Rose. She does exhibit courage because it takes a lot of courage to look at your accomplishments and understand that the journey is never-ending, but that really is what Rose embodies. She takes education as a ladder, and she wants to go up one more step every day. And she has the courage to encourage others to join her on that journey. Rose, thank you so much for what you bring to this community. We could not imagine Wilkinson without you, and we will miss you dearly as you move on to the high school. Thank you.
Now we have Mr. Bryson Duncan. Bryson, too, is our star eighth grader, and what I just simply adore about Bryson, and I'll let Mr. Perpurr finish it, is that he is consistently always a standout in the crowd. He's always being with all of his friends, but he's never afraid to do the right thing. He's, um, on a roll for the last three, um, car markings, and Bryson, we are just so very proud of you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. To continue, Bryson's courage comes in the fact that he will always stand on his principles and morals. When he knows what the right thing to do is, I have never seen him stray from what he believes is right. I have never seen him quiet himself or tell others that it's okay to do what he knows is the wrong thing. He will always make sure that people are doing the best that they can. He is diligent, self-studious. He has always been the person to push himself forward long before anyone else has a word to say to him, and for that, I find nothing but courage in Bryson. Thank you for all that you do, Bryson.
Thank you. Last but not least, we have Madison High School. For the month of May, we are honoring our seniors who have a mere two weeks left with us. We are so excited and so incredibly proud with, uh, all that they've accomplished. Um, so, uh, we can start with Cameron Harris. Come on down. All right, Cam, come on up. There's some things your teachers, staff had to say about you. All right, Cameron, when we think about the qualities that make a truly exceptional student, we often look for traits like perseverance, dedication, and growth. And if there is one student who embodies all of these qualities, it is Cam. Over the past four years, we have witnessed a remarkable transformation both academically and personally. Cameron's attitude toward learning, her curiosity, effort, and passion truly sets her apart. She brings a positive energy to class, motivating others to do their best, and is always willing to lend a hand. And Cameron, beyond the classroom, you have contributed to our school community in many ways, as a model student athlete on both the basketball and track team. She has demonstrated leadership, teamwork, and a genuine desire to make a difference. And lastly, Cam is so mature, she, I will say, is a quiet force. Uh, she's a role model for her peers. Uh, when we see her coach, her teammates on the field, and encourage them to show sportsmanship, she is a true leader. May we have Chris Dillon next? When Chris first walked through these doors as a freshman at Madison, he faced many challenges: navigating high school life, adjusting to new expectations, finding his place in a larger world. Rather than letting these challenges define him, Chris chose to rise above. Through a lot of hard work, commitment to personal growth, Chris has not only improved in his academics, but has become a role model student for his peers. What stands out most is how Chris has embraced his journey of improvement. He has faced setbacks, but never allowed those setbacks to define him. Instead, he used each obstacle as an opportunity to grow stronger, wiser, and more determined. Now, as a senior, Chris stands before us not just as a student of academic achievement, but a student of character. From his comic book anime sponsor, Ms. Brumfield, she says, "We always saw glimpses of what he was capable of as a young pichu, but motivated Chris Dillon is a leveled-up rayshoe. What a shocking turnaround. We're so proud." Did I say those wrong? Well, I missed having him motivated in class, Chris. I was so excited for the new challenges you will face. And from Mr. Beazey, "I remember Chris as a ninth grader coming to game club on Wednesdays, which is now officially esports. He has always been a pleasant student to be around and has matured immensely over this past school year. We are so proud."
With that, I want to say congratulations to all. We're going to take a five-minute break. Uh, anybody who needs to leave, please do so now, but know you're all welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. So I'm not sure what time it is now. It's 6:23. It's time we're going to get back into our agenda. Right now, it is the administrative report. Superintendent Perry.
Good evening. We have a special report from our Metro program. If Mr. Andra can come on up and introduce everyone.
Thank you and good evening. My name is Aaron Andra. I work in the Special Education Department. Just wanted to highlight a few things that are going on before Metro presents. We have opened a STAR room at our elementary school, and that STAR stands for Sensory Tactile Auditory Regulation. It's a space designed for, to support our students' sensory and emotional regulation needs. So we're excited about that. On May 16th, Metro Program will be hosting a spring dance. We will have, we've invited folks from Avondale, Troy, and Lamphier school districts to participate. We're anticipating, or actually, we've had RSVPs from 120 participants. And that will be a day of dancing, socializing, and community building. We're going to have a luau theme, so we're excited about that. And then on June 5th, we are hosting our second annual My K Modified Walk Run. This is part of our Unified Champions Schools Initiative. This event invites our young athletes with disabilities to participate in a one-kilometer race with the support of high school sports teams and peer buddies. Students can run solo or in teams around the designated route on our football field. So we're excited about that. And now, our Madison Metro program. So one of my goals when I started here as director was to be able to serve all of our students here in Madison, so birth to 26th. And this year is the first year that we've been able to do that. So I'm proud to say that we've achieved this goal with the launch of our Madison Metro program. METRO stands for Moving Exceptional Students Toward Real-Life Opportunities. So the students in the METRO program have prepared a presentation, excuse me, to showcase their accomplishments and growth over the past year. So to begin, I'd like to invite two-time Teacher of the Month Christina Coden to give a brief introduction.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christina Coden. And as Erin mentioned, I'm the teacher and director over at Madison Metro. Our young adults have worked hard at putting together this presentation just to kind of showcase and thank you all for having Madison Metro really start off and have a great kickoff year here. Mr. Travis also has something small for each of the board members as well. So thank you. And I need to also shout out to both of my parapros, Mr. Kyle and Ms. Caroline. They both do an exceptional job every day with our young adults.
We want to thank Ms. Perry, Ms. Vermiglio, Mr. Andra, and the board for taking a chance on Madison Metro.
We have featured our new Metro program. Will any of our members, classes, members join us now and achieve a flagrant M.A.?
We have phenomenal artists in a few days. It's on the weekends or some, or all of our works. We have favorites, projects. And we could learn there is a part, parts in the 3D. We have sculptures, and less than one color. There is a parst.
Hey, guys. Matthew here at Madison Metro. And I'd like to say that here at Madison Metro, we sell bales and coffee throughout the district.
Firstly, we bang individual lunches and then we put together food cart for distribution. Every Friday, we work with Andrea, who makes tech fun. Other projects include using Canva, filling out job apps, and internet safety.
Throughout the year, it is a first. Let's give it a version. We made it all, all the side and then there. Mr. Kyle, family, main, the turkey, dessert. Over there, thirteen, people jarred those.
We clean up and clean the space because we got these from the girls for tea. Definitely, we start and have asking Mr. Seth.
With candy donations from the community, we hosted a gingerbread house contest at the middle school. It was great to connect with the students, plus fun was had by all. We have created an online presence across a variety of platforms, including some TikTok videos with a total of 15,000 likes. Follow us at Madison Metro.
After we clean up the greenhouse at the high school, we planted many different things, one seed at a time.
We would have been using any, especially for cut and make sure it's big and short. We should put up for Miss Andrea and Miss Travis for being big help.
And guess what? Here at Madison Metro, working with the environmental club at the middle school, we implemented school white paper recycling, hoping to expand to include all recyclable materials. Check this out. Throughout the school year, we've enjoyed a variety of community outings, such as the mall, library, and weekly poker shops, to getting together with other transition programs, doing things like cardio drumming and basketball games. On May 16th, we will be hosting a luau for three other adult transition programs. We'll have games, music, and activity with tech, and of course, dancing.
Some others where they had the clean foodies. Hope that back history might or it's true that tissue, a pain here and with much does.
We have a place in an house. In Madison, in Metro, we will be running there. And rope the rockets and then access it and the brain is a lab and open. It's a second Metro and making in a house. It's, it's cool.
That was awesome. Awesome. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Next thing on our agenda is the consent agreement. Consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature by the Board of Education and will be acted on by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items by any member of the board or any citizen. Request discussion of an item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and become the first item of business under the Board of Education action items portion of the agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes approval of the minutes of the Board of Education for the regular meeting, April 7th, 2025, approval of the April 25th expenditures in the amount of $1,479,555.49. And lastly, approval of the personnel report submitted by Human Resources on May 5th, 2025. I need a maker in support, please. Trustee Thompson.
I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Do you support?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Christera McAlpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Did Mark Kimball arrive?
He has not. Thank you.
Motion pass.
All right, next is the adoption of the Oakland Schools General Fund Budget Resolution. In accordance with the Michigan School Code, Section 380.6242, the Oakland Schools General Fund Budget must be presented to all 28 Oakland County school districts by May 1st of each year. The proposed budget is for the fiscal year 2526, and it has been distributed electronically to all board members. It is recommended to Madison District Public. School Board of Education adopt the resolution that approves the Oakland Schools General Fund Budget for the fiscal year 2526.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss.
I make a motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution that approves the Oakland Schools General Fund Budget for the fiscal year of 2025 through 2026.
Need discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Christera McAlpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Next up is the approval of the Scribs Virtual Enrollment Campaign Contract. In an outreach broader and more diverse range of families, Madison District Public Schools is partnering with Scribs to launch a virtual enrollment campaign. This initiative will strategically target specific groups of parents based on factors such as age and geographic location. By utilizing digital platforms, including streaming services, YouTube, and online commercials, we aim to raise awareness and increase enrollment across the district. A key factor of this campaign is its ability to track engagement metrics. We will be able to monitor how many individuals visit our district website after viewing the advertisement. This allows how many go on to complete an enrollment application. This allow us to assess the effectiveness of our outreach in real time and make adjustments as needed. The virtual enrollment campaign will cost the district $24,000. Eighty percent of the funding will be funded through summary discovery funds, ensuring that minimal general fund resources are used for this effort. It is recommended the Board of Education approve Scribs Virtual Enrollment Campaign Contract as presented. We need a maker in support, please.
President Holder?
Trustee Chambliss.
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve Scribs Virtual Enrollment Campaign Contract as presented. I'll support.
Trustee Thompson, support. Session? Trustee Chambliss.
I was just asked a few questions about this by someone who saw it on our agenda. And so I just wanted to make sure that the public, since they don't have this, that the public is aware that they wanted to know the demographic that we're targeting, where this would be shown. I know it's in here for us, but just so the public knows where it's going to be shown. And then also, I think I had one more thing that I circled. Hold on. Just that. They just wanted to know who was going to be targeted with this? Where was it going to be targeted? And also, I wanted to mention that it cannot be skipped. The commercial cannot be skipped. It's an unskippable commercial. But yeah, that's what they wanted to know.
So our goal is to target, of course, Madison Heights, Pontiac, because we already have demographics there, Hazel Park and Highland Park. And then we have specific Detroit zip codes that we want to target that are along the eight-mile border. For those zip codes, we are specifically targeting six through 12 students because our elementary school is kind of already filled to capacity. And then we're also going to target zip codes in Warren as well as Centerline. So those are the things, the areas we're going to target. The adults ages 25 through 44. So a good thing about this is that they can specifically target based off of age and zip code. So that's one thing. And in terms of skipping, Pam, do you remember the conversation he had about skipping the ad skipping?
Yes. So with the YouTube, we have an opportunity to advertise through YouTube. YouTube, we only have to pay if the advertisement runs in its full 30 seconds. If at any time somebody gets out of the ad, we do not pay for it. So if they run for five seconds and they exit out of it, we don't have to pay for it. So that was, we thought was a really great thing, especially because, let's say, they only watch it for 10 seconds. We don't have to pay. But at the beginning, we're going to make sure it says Madison District Public Schools, Open Enrollment. You know, the very important things right at the beginning. So if they choose to exit the ad, they'll still get something. We're not charged for it.
Who else? Trustee McAlpine-Taylor.
So we see that on TV, they have a TV ad campaign as well. Can you talk about that a little bit? I noticed that it's on, at least what I'm seeing is one station. Is that correct? Channel 20?
Yes. So basically, this was an add-on that we could have, that we wanted to opt in. So during those times, they will show the ad on TV 20 overnight as well as during the Judge shows, like Judge Judy, so on and so forth. So those are just additional add-ons. So they will be shown from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So they will be shown from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Friday, on TV 20, and then 12:00 AM till 3:00 AM.
Is that our typical audience?
So last year, when we had this conversation with them, they recommended that we added those particular stations.
Based on what we were looking for, that those stations met the parameters of the parents we were hoping to connect with.
Just because we have three new board members here, we did talk about this last year, can we just kind of explain, because it was brand new last year, our expectation, what the results were. Obviously, it wasn't bad, or you wouldn't be bringing it back to us, so this is all new for almost half our board.
So basically, what this does is that when you have streaming, so if you look in your packet on page... The streaming section, so when you log on to stream any of those channels, our ad will be displayed during those times, so our ad will pop up. So that's one component of it. Then the second component is on WXYZ, Channel 7. So whenever, you guys know when you go on to look at a, let's say, a news story, and they say, hey, before you watch this, you have to watch this ad, so that's where our ad would be, as well as they may pop up at the bottom, as well as it would be an ad on YouTube. And then the TV add-ons was something that they offer in addition. However, we thought that it would be best if we run that, those additions, in July and August, because that's when most parents are looking for school, as opposed to June and September. So that's why we decided to do that. And then one of the reasons why we decided to go this way is that I know in the past the district did have like this huge billboard on 75, but it's just, it's too much, it's too fast, like even me driving past it, I'm like distracted, I want to look at it, but then I'm like, I can't look at it. It's right there at that curve where all the accidents take place. So we thought that this would be a better way. Last year, we did not link our access, somehow they're going to put a, what is it called?
Basically, it's going to tell us if they, if at any time that household goes to the Madison website, to the enrollment page, or to our homepage. So they're going to be able to connect that to see, to give us numbers of how many people that watched the video, or the YouTube, or whatever, then in that household, within that same like IP address, then went to our website.
So we'll be able, I'm sorry. And they're going to, he said something about putting the pixel, so when they go to the website, if they start the application, enroll. So that's something new they should as well.
So, for, but they will be... And... ...explaining, and then I...
Trustee Dodge? Oh, Trustee Harp, go ahead.
So, I'm assuming it was successful in the last year. Well, I guess, maybe we didn't have the full report in, but what kind led us to the decision that it was successful? Like, how do we know that it was worthwhile?
So I can give you the numbers. So from 2021, our enrollment was decreasing. It decreased almost 10%. 2021, 2122, it decreased so 8, the next year 5, the next year 2. So when you look at numbers, we started at 1,123, by the end of last year, we were at 877. So there's been quite a decline in the past four to five years. So this year, we had an increase of over 60 students. Now, and that's counting all the students that might have exited the district. So even with all the students that exited, we are still plus 60 students compared to where we've been in the past. So we had a positive of almost 8%. I actually got an alert from the Michigan Department of Ed when I submitted our count, because they were like, "Alert, did you know that your pupil accounting increased by over 8%?" And I was like, "Yes, that's exactly what happened."
Was there other campaigns going on, or are we attributing all of this to this particular campaign?
Between this and Summer Discovery, those two things.
We didn't run any ads, any print ads, we didn't run any ads on... It was just really this.
And we did lawn signs. We had some lawn signs.
About 80% of that money will be coming from...
So we have to run an ad for that, so the majority of the airplay is going to be for Summer Discovery, so we can get more. Right now, we had, we have 280 kids signed up for Summer Discovery, and we are able to go back and adjust our numbers. So by May 15th or 16th, I will, at the next board meeting, I'll have a definite amount. Right now, we were granted $414,000 for the Summer Discovery program, but if we increase this, we can possibly get an additional 150,000. So if we get those numbers up, yeah, thank you. Thank you to the bomber group for supplying us with funding for our Summer Discovery.
Yes.
Yes? No, we're good? Okay. Let's have a, roll call vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss?
Yes.
Melissa Dodge?
Yes.
Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Kristara McAlpine-Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Up is the recommendation of personal communication devices. First read, PO 5136. I know you all had it in your packet. Would you like to speak on this a little bit? I know it was important to you.
So, we have board policy that talks about personal communication devices, but it has not been updated in a very, very long time. So as a school district, we want to make sure that we push for next year, the use of, or not allowing cell phones to be inside the classroom. We think that it is a huge distraction in terms of kids having access to their academics, and also in social lives, in terms of like high schoolers, because the drama come through, the Instagram posts come through. So as a district, we want support on not allowing cell phones inside the classroom. And the first way to get that support is that we need to update our policy. So we, for the new board members, we have a contract with Neola, that is one of the policymakers for a lot of school districts. And what they do is, they give us a cookie cutter policy. We go through, so when I say "we," the building principals, and the tech team, and Pam and I, we went through this, and we selected the best options that was for our students here at Madison. So once we go through it, we present it to you guys, we go through, get your feedback, we go through a first read based off of your recommendations, then we come back for a second read, and after you read it for the second time, then we can adopt the policy. So tonight is just the first read, and if you guys have any feedback, please let me know.
Trustee Dodge?
So I noticed that you're looking to allow during their lunch break, and I'm curious as to the reasoning behind that, just because you mentioned the, you know, checking in with the social media and the drama that ensues during class, and I'm concerned about that during lunchtime, also presenting, plus all the screen time already during the day, screen time at lunch as well.
So we kind of struggle with that, because we, that was one of the things, but it's kind of like you don't want to rip the Band-Aid all the way off, because I feel like we got to kind of be careful with how we present this, because we are an open district, and we just want to make sure that we stress the fact that it's in the classroom. So right now, I don't think as a school, we get a lot of issues inside of the lunchroom.
No, not at all. Because they can, and again, we're a, you know, bring your own device model, and so it's, they, it's like a green light at lunch, and after you're for secondary. Elementary's none at all. And we've not had any issues. I think the biggest thing is that with teenagers, their phone is like an appendage, and we know that completely taking it away is going to just cause more, more opportunities for them to try to sneak and look at it. If we give them this set time that they will be allowed to look at it, it should prevent them from sneaking and trying to do it during a classroom. That's our hope. And again, it's, it would, you know, we have to imagine ourselves, if we were told that we couldn't look at our phone from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM, would we be able to do that? Well, we're adults, and I understand that it's different for us, but the students are not used to this, and so if we say 8 to 3, nothing, but at least we give them that 30 minutes, that will also help them with time management, and being able to use that time to effectively either look at their phone, do, you know, classwork, whatever they need to do. So that will also help with time management.
McAlpine-Taylor? Wasn't sure who asked.
So I love a no-cell phone policy. Oh my gosh, it's the light of my life to think about a no-cell phone policy. Because I, there is so much data to support, how much stress and anxiety, you know, just how like lower functioning our social ability is when we use devices constantly. I did notice also that it's between classrooms that you could... I can tell you that I'm in a school this year that did exactly what this is saying. And at the beginning, it was great, teachers loved it, I just, this is just what I've seen. And as the year went on, it kind of waned, and they were looking more and more and more. They did have like cellphone caddies to like check your cellphone in, or if you left the classroom, like to use the bathroom, because let me tell you, they take their cellphone out, they go, you know, that they, they have to leave it in the classroom. Are we having any of those types of policies, and what do we do when it starts to wane? Because it will. And I think we just have to be real with that, because you're right, we all are like addicted to our cell phones, we really think about it. Adults are too, and it's, I mean, I could be on a soapbox. It's just a terrible thing we've done to our children, is to allow all of the social media and the cellphone, the constant barraging of communications instead of allowing our brain to settle for a moment. So I guess that's my question.
The rules, the only way for the rules to get lax is if staff lets it. So we have to really focus on, at the beginning of the year, next year, coming back with staff, and having staff understand why this is so important, why it's important to the staff member in the room next to you, that you don't allow things when everybody else is not. And I think it's going to come down to really having them, that buy-in from them, because they're, the teachers want it, the majority of the teachers want it. I can tell you from all of the surveys that we've done, this has been the biggest issue that they see. So the teachers are on board, it's just going to be making sure that we have 100% buy-in, and that that one teacher is not letting them use it, and oh, don't tell anybody, because then that's going to ruin it for the entire district.
Oh, and they'll tell them, by the way. There's them, yeah.
And can I just add one more thing to that? And also with the Curriculum Task Force, that's the group of K through 12 teachers, they meet on Saturdays once a month. And with that, we kind of went through this policy, and one of the things they recommend is, when adopted in June, we want to host virtual town halls with people who are aware, and so that they can know like, hey, this is what we're doing next year, we understand your safety, but present different facts and different scenarios as to why or how not having a cellphone in the classroom can really impact student achievement.
And help them understand how you can contact your child in an emergency if you need to, because 20 years ago, you couldn't text them, you had to call the school, and that's what we're going to get back to, is, is there will be that, that connection and that communication between the parent and the school building.
Listen, I'm just looking to see if Mr. Kimball's on his way yet. Okay, Trustee Chambliss.
So I'm going to be the opposite of this board, apparently. Ms. Perry, when you did that interview where you were talking about cell phones in the classroom, I'm not, I don't remember who it was through, there was a video about it, it was on Facebook. I, I shared that, and it blew up. It went, parents commenting, 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 most, and I'm, mine was just like, you know, Ms. Perry's doing great, and she's wonderful, and Madison District stands strong, and blah, blah, blah. And most were attacking that, because parents have serious concerns about their children not having cell phones, for many reasons. Number one, to the argument of it, there's too many distractions with social media, with, you know, drama on, you know, Facebook and whatever, those distractions don't go away as adults. So we need to teach children restraint, we need to teach them that there's a time and place, that they can have their phones in their pocket, or on their bodies, but they can't touch it, that they need to focus on what they're doing, because when they have a job, they're going to get fired, or, you know, suspended, or whatever, if they're sitting there playing on their phone. So by allowing them to have it in their pocket, or in their bag, or wherever, but have to learn restraint and appropriateness of use and not use time, that's something that guides them as they go towards adulthood, because those distractions don't go away. And then, you know, to say 20 years ago, you couldn't text your child, that's accurate, but the issues that parents face when they send their children into these buildings now are much different than 20 years ago. 20 years ago, when I went to school, my mom did not worry about schools like Columbine and things like that, like that was much different. Like nowadays, it's a much different thought process as a parent sends their kids into a building. There, I will not name names, but I mean, if you go back and look at that post, it's a city council person that even comments and says, "My child will not attend a school that they cannot carry a cellphone in." And I will tell you, we've had school, and I'm going to be completely honest, and I don't, I will not, I will stand on this. My children are told, "You will never break a school policy." If you break one, and you're told it, and you didn't know, okay, you learn, you move on. You don't break the rules, no whether you agree with them or not. If an adult tells you a rule and you don't like it, you don't argue, you say, "Yes, ma'am, yes, sir," and you keep moving, because it's not your place to argue. You come to me, I'll deal with the rule if I don't agree with it, with whoever, as an adult, you don't argue with it. The one rule I will allow my children to break is a phone rule, because I will not send my kids to a school that they don't have a cellphone. In an emergency, I do not want a teacher, one person, trying to handle calling 911, alerting the office, doing all that, closing the door, directing the kids, telling them where to go, things like that. In most instances of school emergencies, there are countless accounts of students being the ones calling 911, and students alerting their parents, or, you know, helping the teacher. And I just think that telling kids, "You're not capable of sitting in a classroom without a cellphone," is telling them that if you're, if you can't do something right, we'll just take the issue away. We need to teach our kids restraint, responsibility, professionalism, because they're about to go in the real world. This is for high school level kids, so high school level kids are supposed to be taught how to go forward after high school, what's the next level of their life, and to tell them, you know, "We're just going to put this in a pocket, or on a cart, or in your locker, because, you know, you can't be trusted." That's just give, that's just why we're not teaching our kids to do better, we're just taking it away like they're five, and, you know, it's a toy, we don't want them to have anymore. It just sounds like the easy way out, and honestly, this does, unfortunately, as if their jobs aren't hard enough, this falls on teachers, because it's very simple, have a policy in place, you have your phone out, you're warned once, you have your phone out again, you're sent to the office. You go to the office, you get in trouble, you talk to the parents, you have it out again, it's a suspension. Like, it can be an escalating issue, but I just think it's not going to be a policy that's followed. I, I don't know.
President Holder?
President Holder?
I'm going to let Trustee Thompson speak, and then I'll go back to my left. Trustee Thompson.
My question is, are we having pockets in each classroom?
No, we're not, and, and we're not having pockets in each classroom, and we're not saying we don't trust the kids in the phone, with the phones. What we're saying is, we want kids to put academics first in the classroom, the cell phones can be in your locker, you can have access to them during changing time, and you can have access to them during lunchroom time. But in the classroom, as you guys know, teachers do have a lot of battles to fight, and this is one battle that is causing unnecessary time interruption, and yes, we do tell the kids, and the policy says, if you're caught with your phone, you can get it confiscated, where it's going to go to the office, so on and so forth. So right now, we have nothing to back us on getting a phone if it's out in the classroom.
Okay, so I have a few things. First of all, as a teacher, coming from a building where this... First of all, as a teacher, coming from a building where this, a policy was implemented, where there are no cellphones except before school starts and then after school ends, there were some growing pains, but it's the best thing ever. Because it did take something off our teachers' plates. It was maybe a month of adjustment and since then, it's been great. And it is a staff, staff has to buy in, so I love that. I love your parent rollout to get parent buy-in and explain. And I'll be honest, the greatest offenders are parents contacting their children during school day. And it's very disruptive, even on their Apple Watches or other devices, not just their phones. I recommend the board members to check out the book, The Anxious Generation. It's, it's a great book and it really addresses a lot of the things we're talking about right now. I also want to point out that we have to consider the maturity and the developmental places that our teenagers are in and as far as restraint goes and what's appropriate to be taught in school versus what should be taught at home. We can't put more and more on our educators, asking them to raise our children. They do have a role, obviously, in, in, in the upbringing of children through education. But something as far as like restraint of a phone use during work, I think that's a work ethic that could best be taught by parents and that's not more we need to put on our educators right now. So I, I would disagree on that point. I think that we need to support our educators. They have more and more that they have to do. And if we can take this off their plates of asking them to be monitors of cellphones and devices, I, I think it's the least that we can do for them. So I, I would like to say that this is actually generous, allowing the students during passing time and lunch. Like I said, I'm coming from a building where I teach and there is no cellphone use except before the bell rings to start the day and then once it ends, so.
I'm Taylor.
Yeah, so, um, I, I, actually, um, trust Rebecca. Yeah, um, I love so much of what you said, right? I, I think that there is so many good points to, you know, making sure that we do teach our children restraint. And from what I heard, and I just want to get clarification. What I heard is that this cellphone policy wouldn't require them not to have it on their person. It would require them not to pull it out in the classroom, is that correct?
What they have on their person, we can't really check. We would want to say, hey, keep it in the locker. However, we're not searching every kid. But the policy does say that it can't be in the classroom, it can't be out in the classroom.
Right, and that's what I heard. I just wanted to clarify that, that that is what I heard. I do think it's a generous policy. I, you know, a lot of districts are going cellphone free. I think, what was it, Novi that just did something like that this year. I will say that in this, the district or the school that I work in that has adopted this almost identical policy, by the way, with the same thing that had said that like if it's out, you know, you go down, like all of those things. Absolutely, almost identical to that. What we heard from kids at first, there was some growing pains, but then it was relief. Because there's so much anxiety with it. And I agree, that book, The Anxious Generation, phenomenal. And it really does talk about a lot of those, that, that cellphone use and that electronic use. So I just, I wanted to reiterate that although it sounds very anxiety provoking for us to put up our phones or, or keep it in our, our, on our person without pulling it out all the time, what I have also heard is relief, stress relief from not only teachers, from our students and our students feeling better. Now, we do have to keep, as I had said before, we have to maybe reteach that throughout the year, that that's, you know, what our policy is for sure. However, I think it can, we're, we're working both sides where we're not requiring, I was just saying, like there is a caddy that, in, in our school, but like you don't have to put it there. Where we, we're not requiring a student to keep it out off their person to relieve some of that anxiety that parents have.
And honestly, if it is so anxiety ridden, there are IEPs. If, if it was that severe of a case where a student needed to have it or a 504 that could allow for that accommodation, or if there is a diabetic student that needs to have it on them, for that reason, I'm sure that accommodations and that kind of case would be made. So in those real extreme situations, it's not like students would be denied. So I think that should be considered.
Can I just?
Tag on.
Yeah, can I tag on to that, is that okay?
Yeah, and then trustee.
I'm so sorry, would you like to? So I just want to, I, I have seen that for diabetic students to, to keep it on their person. I would say actually for super, for anxiety, the more, you know, the best anxiety drug is to do what we're feeling anxious about. But the best cure is to go past it and do what we're, we're anxious about. Does that make sense? So for instance, we think that it would reduce anxiety keeping a phone on us when actually it creates more. And the best cure for anxiety is actually to put it down.
So I, I don't think it's unreasonable for a student to go one class period without looking at their phone. I think that's fair. You can look at it between classes. And I'm not making light of any tragedies that happen in schools by no means, but a student having their phone will not stop that. If we're concerned about safety, security, other things, then we need to address that separately. A cellphone rule will not stop or rule that out. Thank you.
I'm going to let trustee Chambles and then I'll finish you. Go ahead, trustee Chambles.
I don't think anyone thinks a cellphone's going to stop a tragedy, that would be silly. The point of a cellphone during a tragedy is to alert people and to allow the teacher to focus on the securing of the classroom and things like that while the students can worry about something else. But to say that it needs to be stored in the locker or off their body is, I, I'm not arguing that they shouldn't use it during class. I'm saying if they use it during class, obviously take the road of the consequences, like I said. But to say that it should be stored in a locker or off their body is where I would draw my line. But I do have a question about the part where it says the use of personal devices that contain built-in cameras. Are we allowed to use those in the gym or no?
That was, I was going to ask. So actually, it should, I don't know why it's not checked, but it should say the use of PCDs, personal communication device with built-in cameras, are prohibited in the classroom. So classrooms should be checked, gymnasium, locker room, shower facilities and swimming pool. So this right here, it does not say they cannot have it on them in their person. That doesn't say that. It says they cannot pull it out and use it in the classroom.
My question is, what about for like the gym? Like when you have like athletics going on and things like that?
There is a clause in here that says you can use it during after-school activities. And also, I do want to add that we kind of looked up to see what other districts were doing and we wanted to possibly write in where it says the top, when it talks about what exactly our personal communication device is. We wanted to add a little clause in there about Chromebooks because Chromebooks do have a built-in camera. However, it's not a personal communication device. We have software on there like GoGuardian, we can shut down the camera, so on and so forth. So in the next read, if you guys give me the okay, I do want to take another district's policy and specifically mention Chromebooks. Because we do give all of our kids Chromebooks. But it's not a personal communication device. But just to avoid that, oh, where is it personal? Because you let me borrow it, so it's personal. We specifically want to put a statement in there about that.
Anybody else, trustee Chambles?
So I just want to clarify, with this policy, students can have their phones on them. They don't have to put it in the locker.
It doesn't say that in the policy. It says they just cannot use them.
Cannot have it out in the classroom, correct.
Cannot be used. So if it's in your hand, then we can say, oh, you're using it because we have it in your hand.
Agreed.
I just wanted, because you had brought up watches. How do we avoid that? Because that's as big a communication device as a phone.
Well, then we would probably have to also check number two because number one talks about personal communication devices with built-in cameras. But then option two just talks about personal communication devices. You can't take pictures with your watch, right? Our watches, smartwatches don't have cameras.
You can take it if the phone is set up. You can use your watch to take it.
But you can't like, hey, so.
You can't use your phone to take a picture, I mean, your watch to take a picture. Now, you can communicate with text.
So, so is that a separate problem? The pictures are a bigger problem than the communication? Or they're equally important, I guess?
It's really social media. And they can access social media on their watch.
So are we, is the intent then to include that? I, I just want to know what everybody is thinking.
Sorry, I think that would be really difficult, wouldn't it? To, to tell somebody they can't wear a watch.
I don't think, I'm saying, it kind of like the phone. It's not that they can't have it, it's they can't use it.
Use it to tell time. But, you know, if you're messaging on it, if you're, you know, in that, yeah.
Then it would be treated the same as a cellphone.
Yeah, I'd think so.
Everybody agrees with that, trustee Hart?
What about like Fitbits? Mine's not connected to my phone, it's not connected to any social media at all. It literally just counts my steps.
So unless you're using it.
Communication device.
But how would someone know if I'm, you know, swiping to, you know, check something? It could look like I'm on social media.
That's what I was thinking.
But you shouldn't be in class.
I mean, using it.
Passing time, wait till passing time.
And I have a feeling a, a lot of students are not checking their step count.
But, but like for me, like it doesn't automatically light up. I have to tap it or swipe it to even see the time. So it could look like I'm playing with it.
Do we have digital clocks in the, or clocks, any kind of analog, whatever in the classrooms?
I think people have habits though, that, that'll be.
So am I hearing that we, with the couple of minor adjustments?
Sure. Trustee Chambles, you asked about like after-school events in the gymnasium. And if you look on the back on page 34, it says possession of a PCD by a student at school during school hours and/or during extracurricular activity is a privilege. So they can have it during extracurricular activities.
Just like lunch and passing time.
Right now, the majority of the board isn't agreeing to move on.
Are you guys okay with me adding that statement about the Chromebooks specifically for the next read?
Okay.
And the watches.
And the watches.
Trustee Chambles, you're good? All right. Uh, next up, recommendation of policy board committee members. I know that trustee Thompson and trustee Chambles were members previously. I know trustee Kimball would like to participate. I don't know if there's anybody else that wanted to do that. I'm sorry, trustee Kimball wants to be the third member. Is there anybody else that wants to participate?
Can I explain what it looks like? Sure. So basically, how a policy works, I don't know about you guys' bylaws because I've never participated in that. But how it works is Pam and I work with someone from Neola. We get on a virtual meeting, we say what time is good. They send us an email that says, hey, these are the updates you need to look at. We will meet as a team, read through them, or I'll send them to you early. You can have your edits and give your recommendations. And then we just come back and present it to the board. So it doesn't have to be face-to-face, it can be virtual, it can be I send you a mock-up, you send me back your opinion. And if we have a difference, then we can have a conversation. But it is becoming really hard for Pam and I to try to do this on top of everything.
Well, and it's really not necessarily your job to do.
Okay, well, stop.
Let's take our own board policies.
Yeah.
And I don't know, board policies and bylaws. I don't know if it would be a problem to have more than three.
Wouldn't four make a crime?
Well, only because you're, that, that was my thought. So I think, um, right now, do you want to continue?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and I know that Kimball wanted to participate.
It's my whole, it's my favorite.
Anybody want to?
I'll look if there's available space or no one else wants to.
Okay, so can we put you as the alternate, Carlos?
Can I ask a question? Can we divide it? I don't mind leading the board policy, but I think the board members should lead their own bylaws. Right. So we can have a policy committee and a bylaw committee? Then I think that will work best.
But they're, they're not really separated, so I'm unclear.
So I don't participate with bylaws. You guys set the bylaws of how you want to govern. So that's not really up to us. The policy is how we want the district to run.
The bylaws are what we.
Correct. But, but our policies also needed to be updated. I know that we tried to do that.
No, we have been updating.
You have been doing some, but, but there have been updates that are board. I had heard a question. I know Rebecca tried to do some work, it never went anywhere because it never got shared.
Right.
So we need to start anew, go through our policies and our bylaws. Would you like to have two separate committees?
That's what I'm saying.
That's what you're asking.
We should have a bylaw and a policy committee.
That being said, what do we, what would we like to do about having a separate bylaw and policy committee?
The bylaws could be knocked out in like maybe two or three meetings. The policies is a much, much longer.
There's a lot of bylaws here. I bring them to every meeting.
I just don't have it on my plate to take my bylaws.
And, and yeah, it's really not yours to have to worry about. You do administration stuff. So what is the thought with everybody? Do we want to separate it? Or I know we've had suggestions as to maybe policy changes. So they are things that many of us have been concerned about.
I think we should separate bylaws and policies.
Well, I guess I'm going to ask you, what do, what do you guys think?
Do we need a motion for that?
Okay, so I have a.
Yeah, you can.
I have a question about that.
Sure.
It, it sounds like you like the, the policy a lot. Is it, do you like the both of, can you be on both of them?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and how much? So there'd be two different meetings, two totally different situations, correct? Yes, okay.
Just thought on that. Trustee Dodge.
Yep, I have no issue.
Okay, we split them, yes.
Chambles. I'm fine with that.
I brought it up, yeah.
Okay.
Chambles.
Um, vice president Chambles, do you want to separate? Like you, you could lead bylaws and then I lead policy? And we can have like two teams?
You're going to do policy?
Yeah. If you do bylaws and I'll take on policy. And then you can lead that. I'll put you in contact with the rep for Neola for bylaws.
Okay, can I still come to your policy meeting?
Yeah.
Just because that's my favorite part of this whole thing.
Yep, that's fine.
I know our policy's forward and backwards, so.
Good. When are we going to set up? And this is the part that I need to kind of be as clear about because we talked about this and talked about this and talked about this and it never happened. So I don't want us to spin our wheels again. So we need potential days and times and. And who would it like to be on the bylaw committee?
I am. I would.
Trustee Thompson.
And Chambliss, right? Thompson, Chambliss.
And bylaws.
Trustee Harp. Understand that they're, they're going to make suggestions. And then like this reading that we did today, then we're going to discuss it. So there's nothing that they're ever going to bring to us that's going to be, this is what it needs to be.
Right.
Okay? So we really need for those two groups to decide.
So on policy, I'm sorry, I was.
Rebecca, Gloria.
No, that's bylaws. That's bylaws.
No, policy was Rebecca, Gloria, and Carlos.
And bylaws was Rebecca, Gloria, and Carlos.
So I will add these to the committee reports every meeting.
And before we go into closed session, I just want to clarify something. We did talk about the two, Trustee Dodge and Trustee McAlpine Taylor had asked for something to be on the agenda tonight about the finance committee and the studies. And traditionally, our bylaws say it needs to be done today. So I apologize, but we did have a conversation with Superintendent Perry. And that is going to be part of our study session in two weeks. So I wanted to make it clear that we didn't ignore it. And we will be better about making sure it's on the next agenda.
No worries. Can you remind me of those topics?
Building usage.
Building usage.
Building usage. Finance, and what, what is, what particular about finance?
We were just wanting to see the viability of a committee to look at our district as a whole and to best see what the usage is of our facilities to best use our funds.
My question is, is this just a discussion amongst us? Like, I'm not bringing anything to the table. I just want to be clear.
Correct. Just, just to see if we can, like, have a committee to talk about it and like.
Discussion.
Who would be the stake, you know, having stakeholders there?
Present.
And present, yes. And just to.
It's going to be more informational than anything else, especially with the three new board members that we have. And us having to make decisions, what about the contracts that come up and stuff, so.
I just want to make sure that I don't have to bring anything to the table about these two topics.
Is there any, any information in particular that you would like included?
We just wanted to see if a committee could be made to look into it. So as of, like, next week, I don't know if there needs to be any information except for pupil counts maybe per building.
Yeah. This would be a committee that looks into. We were, just wanted to explore our fiscal usage of buildings. And, you know, if we're, you know, being most responsible.
Madam President.
Trustee Thompson.
How will this be different than our regular finance committee meeting that we have the second Wednesday of every month?
They're not available is the first, first point of order.
Well, I think this was more of discussion of, just to see, like, what our usage is, how we can best look at that. If we're under, I know that we had talked a couple of different places where there are certain buildings that are really under, I think, what is it? UCC is not.
Underutilized.
It's underutilized, right? And so what are some options? I'm not saying anything will come out of it, just like what are some options?
Just discussing some ideas.
Yeah.
Couldn't we use part of Hafman that's not being used? If we have overage for, say, like, kindergarteners?
So what I'm hearing you saying is that, just not to answer your question right now, in a minute. What you guys are asking for is not necessarily to start a new committee. You want to have a discussion at the table about where, where can we fill in the gaps and use the building? So that needs, you want an agenda item discussion. Now, if a committee is birthed from that next week, then it will be birthed.
I think what they wanted was a study session in open, so they can ask the questions and concerns, especially being new. They don't necessarily have answers to the questions. Are the programs self-sufficient? It's not a, it is not a finger point, it's informational.
But I want to make sure we're prepared. So is there any way you can give us the questions that you guys may have? And I can get whatever data you need? Because it would be a waste if we have this discussion and I can't produce any answers.
Trustee Harp, Trustee Dodge, and Trustee McAlpine Taylor, as well as the other four of us. If you have any specific questions that you would like answered. She needs to bring data to her, or if anyone needs to bring data for.
I don't have this time, but I may soon. When do you need those questions by, so you can prepare?
At least by Friday before the next meeting. Our next meeting is the seventeenth. Is that right?
Will this help?
The nineteenth.
Would this help move us ahead to the goals that you two had? Or am I misunderstanding? As if I'm misunderstanding?
I just wanted to explore options. Right, toss around some ideas.
Yes.
Present some ideas. Like, see if buildings should be merged and things like that?
Possibly.
Is that?
Possibly. I don't, yeah, it could be. I mean, I, I know that.
That's what you want. I'm saying like, to say, this building has four hundred, this one has three hundred, but this building holds nine, or thousands, we'll put them in. You know, maybe something like that.
Yeah, the last thing we want to do is like, you know, reduce staff or anything.
No, no.
Just to ask the question. There's a lot of school districts that are kind of condensing in order to be fiscally responsible.
Right. That's a. Or moving certain programs in other places. And so I guess the cost of different programs and.
Is there any way, would it be possible if we could kind of brainstorm and let you know some questions? I'm so sorry, I don't have those questions.
Yeah, just as long as you have them before the Friday before, right?
I'm okay with the Friday before.
Or the Wednesday before, maybe.
I prefer Wednesday.
Let's say the Wednesday before.
Let's see if we can do that.
I think we could commit to the Wednesday before.
I'll put it in the newsletter to remind you. How about I just put a Google form in the newsletter to say, hey, if you have any questions?
That's lovely.
Add your questions here.
Yeah, beautiful.
I love that.
And like I said, this is for discussion and informational. So I don't want anybody to run and say, oh, my God, they weren't talking about X, Y, Z. I think we're just being fiscally responsible to it.
And understand the whole picture.
And see what all of us feel needs to be done, to move ahead.
And just opening a discussion, like, just to see.
All right, we're going to move on to the closed session. Motion to enter into closed session pursuant to sections eight C of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act Two Six Seven of nineteen seventy-six to discuss strategy and negotiation sessions connected with the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement.
President Holder, so moved.
Trustee Dodge. Your support?
I'll support.
Trustee Chambliss. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll co-vote, please.
Rebecca Chambliss? Yes. Melissa Dodge? Yes. Carlos Harp?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Kristara McAlpine Taylor?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passed.
You need to let, who's gonna get the degrees together to have the robes correct?
Can you just, can I, give me a minute? Can we talk about that and I'll put it in my newsletter?
I have that huge, and I need a smaller one.
Okay, I will put it in my newsletter.
No, no.
Graduations now.
I need a new one. Mine's been messed up since I got it. Everybody keeps telling me there's gonna be a new one.
There you go.
It's like tangled and knotted.
You want me to check on the sizes, right? The robe sizes?
But also because of the different degrees that have been established, the colors need to be.
So we don't buy those. You use your own. Like, we don't buy the.
You have them at your house? My husband never kept theirs.
Do you have a, do you have your collar? Well, it would be my drape. I don't know, I'll have to check.
You're gonna be here for years. We just give them a black robe and they put their own. Like, I use my own robe.
Oh, I thought that we ordered them.
Wait, what do we need to get?
And we don't know a time yet.
You know when you graduated, what you wore the collar?
Maybe it's like yellow.
I'll send it in my email. Get any emails, right?
I didn't walk for my masters or my MFA. Graduation is awesome. Because I was coaching, so I couldn't miss that, so I didn't walk. And my diploma?
Well, anyway.
I may have to order another one. Yeah, me too.
There you go. Well, the 30th is graduation day. And then they have a pinning at the high school on the 14th. I'm not sure why we don't get, like, um.
What is it, a stone?
It's on the school calendar.
Yeah, honestly, I don't look at it.
I would rather have them send me something, but the 14th, they have a pinning at 5:30 at the high school.
What's the date of the 14th? It's for the lunar super.
I think it's a Wednesday. It might be when you guys have to go to your other meeting.
Yeah, we have training that day.
Wait, where did my lunar arch go? They told me to leave it up until pinning.
Well, anyway, we're back in. It's 8:47. Let's do committee reports, GRC.
Um, there hasn't been a lot done since the last time. They're still, you know, struggling with understanding what some of the federal budget cuts are going to do to education. They're still, you know, struggling with understanding what some of the federal budget cuts are going to do to education. And, but as far as the law, I talked about, like, some of the laws and stuff last time. I should be getting another report on Wednesday.
There is going to be a native plant sale Memorial Day weekend at Civic Center Park. Since the city owns, or the city of Madison Heights owns a section of John R. that spans from Dartmouth South to Ten Mile. That's the section that we're responsible for repairing. The county owns Dartmouth North to 14, and that's on them. We did apply for money to fix Dartmouth South back when, during COVID. But we just got it now, so we will be starting in the next spring to work on Dartmouth to Ten Mile. The pickleball courts grand opening at Rosie's is on May 30th at 5:30. We're getting new lighting for Rosie's and Huffman Parks baseball diamonds. A lot of focus on Rosie's this year. A lot of community leagues registration for the summer underway. Softball, baseball, et cetera. Many are full already, but they're trying to get a bunch more kids for T-ball. So if your child plays T-ball, the city of Madison Heights would really like for them to register. Madison Heights Parks and Rec Summer Camp is seeking to hire four counselors, one lead and two supervisors. You must be 16 years old to hold certain positions, 18 years old to hold others. But please see the city of Madison Heights website if you're interested in working for the Parks and Rec Department. And then the most important thing about the Parks and Rec meeting was every few years, the city of Madison Heights sends out a survey to all the residents. And it, basically, you're filling it out to basically tell the city what you want at the parks that are directly around your house. So what is at Ambassador might not be the same at Huffman, might not be the same, you know, at Rosie's. And like we saw, the basketball courts were considered underutilized. So they removed them from Rosie's and refilled them with pickleball, which a lot of people are upset. But that's what these surveys are for. So everybody received a Parks and Rec brochure. If you don't still have this, because there is a QR code inside that the survey is on, if you don't still have this, they're gonna be sending out postcards. You're gonna be able to find it on their Facebook page, on the website. But please, everybody in the city of Madison Heights, fill out the survey. It's just a quick little thing and let them know what you would like to see citywide from the department, but also, you know, more locally around your house. We finished our last five-year master plan, which is what they do. They use the survey information and they make a five-year plan. And that's what they're gonna do in the city over those five years. And then they do everything they can to get grants and secure money to be able to do those things. We finished our last five-year master plan two years early, which is why we're doing one so soon. So people might remember the last one. But that's it. Juneteenth flag raising is June 13th at 8:00 AM at City Hall. So if you would like to see that, please attend. The Juneteenth celebration is Saturday, June 14th, where there'll be music, food trucks, vendors, games, and more. The Arts and LGBTQ Pride Festival is Sunday, June 22nd, where there'll also be music and vendors and food trucks and more. The Paradise Eve Lantern Festival is May 31st, which is an Asian culture experience. And there will be dancing culturally, like historical dancing. And then there's gonna be literally a lantern lighting. May is Mental Health Awareness Month. It is also Jewish Heritage Month, Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Memorial Day is coming up, and today is Cinco de Mayo, which is when the Mexican military beat the French. Thank you, Colton.
Finance Committee, we have not, but we will be correct. Yes? This week on Wednesday?
No, next week.
Next week on Wednesday.
On the 14th.
Thank you. Enrollment Committee.
So we met, and I feel like the biggest takeaway was there's a lot of discussion about, at the middle school, finding greater engagement after-school activities, clubs, and different ways that we can get students involved and have programs after-school for them. Superintendent Perry, is there anything I'm missing?
We are going to post the kindergarten roundup videos and GSRP videos for those who could not attend our event. I think it was in March or February. So those will be on the website as well as on Facebook. So if you have kids that are coming into kindergarten or GSRP next year, check out the video and enroll your kid.
Thank you.
We have board comments. Trustee Thompson, the floor is yours.
Again, I'd like to congratulate all the students and staff members who got awards tonight. Congratulations for all teachers since it is Teacher Appreciation Week. I mean, that's about it.
Thank you, everybody, for watching. Thank you to all of our amazing teachers, not only here in Madison District, but everywhere. Teaching is a profession only the kindest and most loving people choose. It's not the money or the easy laid-back environment that entices them. It's a calling of their hearts. Thank you for guiding, coaching, and educating the next generation. It is in your hands, I feel confident, for our future. Last week was Senior Decision Day. This was the fourth year Madison held this event. And as always, Ms. Helchowski and her crew of amazing helpers did a phenomenal job. So proud of all of our seniors. And congrats to Ms. Colley for receiving Educator of the Year from Junior Achievement. I just think that's phenomenal, so, and that's it.
I'm Taylor.
Okay, Way to Go Devon Coco, by the way, for Staff Member of the Year. That's amazing. I just, with her encouraging and inspiring lessons, I loved that. I was like, oh my gosh, that's amazing. As well as all the building principals, I know that they work so very, very hard. And probably the most, oh, the metro program. That is so close to my heart. As a person that works almost exclusively in special education, it just brought tears to my eyes. And I just want to thank them so much for being here and doing that amazing video and just educating us all on how amazing the metro program is. Thank you for that.
You, Trustee Devon.
Our district would be nothing without the fabulous educators that tirelessly serve the students and community of Madison. So I would like to express a heartfelt thank you to each and every single one of our Madison educators. You are the heartbeat of our district.
Just want to say the Madison Metro presentation was awesome. And, you know, I may have got a little choked up during that. So it was, it was, it was nice. I really enjoyed that. And I would also like to say that I am thankful to be part of a board where even though we may disagree, we can have civil discussions. That's very welcome and seems rare these days. So I appreciate the board for that. Thank you.
On that, I think I've been around for a while, and I just see us all being great contributors and moving forward. And it's just been a very positive feeling all the way around. And I think everybody kind of feels it. So, yeah, I'm excited about what's gonna happen next and how we're gonna help this move on. With that, I need one more motion for the night.
I make the motion to adjourn.
And Trustee Thompson.
Just do it quick.
They wanted just a total eye vote. Everybody in agreement? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes. Good night.
Good night.